First order of business after that is the approval of the minutes of January 18th.
Kevin, I read the minutes and I think they're fine and I recommend that we.
Actually, I had one.
If you want to make corrections, do that after it's seconded.
We have seconded it?
No, make your correction.
No, we'll make my correction first. I don't have the line, but under the Antonio's application, it's just a reversal of the words. It says in a mounted horse on top and it should be a hot horse mounted on top. There's a difference between.
What is it, a mounted horse? Is there a rider on it?
Yeah, there's no rider on the horse.
No.
There's no rider on the horse.
Then it's horse mounted.
So it's the horse is mounted, the horse is mounted, not the.
That's why he didn't want to make the change.
It's line 39.
Line 39, the expert says. Alright, so with that, are you still willing to make that motion?
Sure, I move that way.
Do you have a second? I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And I have to abstain because I wasn't here.
Alright, three approvals.
Got to table it.
We don't have enough to approve it.
Okay.
Yes, you can, if you've got a quorum, you've got enough to approve it.
Okay, alright.
You can approve the minutes 1-0 if you have to.
Okay, alright. We had two exemptions. We have no public hearings. I assume you're all here out of interest tonight, but we, just so you know, this isn't a public hearing, so we don't have the opportunity for the public to speak in case you were looking forward to that. So you'll just get to be educated like the rest of us. You're welcome to listen in. And so with that, anything else you want to mention?
No, George, how we had the commission is that this is kind of like an old fashioned receipt of the application. It would be a good idea, you know, just like an informal, but to have the applicant come and then schedule for March 6th and then for the action item.
Right, yeah, that was the other thing I wanted to mention. So there won't be a vote tonight if you were interested.
And it is a site plan, so under our staff, under our rules, does not require a public hearing. And then finally, since I have a lot of people here, just so everybody knows, the inland wetlands commission that was scheduled for tomorrow night is canceled. We are working with the applicant to schedule, to reschedule that over the next coming weeks.
Alright, and that was just a technical thing again?
Yeah.
Okay, so tonight we're going to hear application CZ RZC 23-03 of Vessel Real Estate Holdings LLC, applicant D A Y Properties. And do we have someone to speak to that? And then we ask that every time I speak that you actually give your name and address.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Peter Alter. I'm a lawyer. I practice law in Glastonbury at the firm of Alter and Pearson. You're representing the applicant. And as some introductory remarks, I did want to speak a little bit about Connecticut general statutes 8-30G just to help everyone understand the process and how we arrive here. The Connecticut legislature and government recognize that Connecticut, like many other places, lacks opportunities for affordable housing, that great numbers of people are prevented from being able to live in appropriate housing, principally due to the costs that are associated with the development of housing. And so Connecticut general statute 8-30G was passed some years ago. And what it provides is that for a project that comes forward under this statutory provision, the applicant can present a plan that does not meet all of your zoning regulations. And that you as a commission can judge that principally for purposes of public safety, public health. But the project can't be denied because it doesn't meet all of your zoning regulations. And just so we're very clear, our building exceeds the maximum height for building in the R15 zone. You allow 35 feet. This building is about 42 and a half feet. Your regulation requires that an 80-unit multifamily development like this one would require 160 parking spaces. Where the plan you'll see tonight proposes 93 parking spaces. The 93 parking spaces is consistent with a statute that was passed in 2021 by the legislature, which indicates that provided development provides one parking space per unit, that that's deemed adequate. We obviously are in excess of that, but we certainly don't meet the 160 provision that your regulation would otherwise require. In order to qualify under this statute, several things have to be true. Number one, that Simsbury lacks at least 10% affordable housing within your housing units. Your plan of conservation development indicates that there's about, round numbers, 9,000 housing units in Simsbury. You should have 900 affordable housing units, which would be 10%, and you have about 4.8% of affordable units as defined by the statutory provisions. A community that achieves 10% is exempted from the 830G provisions. A community that demonstrates that it is moving towards success in creating affordable housing under, and I won't even try to explain it because unless I'm sitting with the statute, I can't. There's a complicated formula that would allow you to establish up to a four-year moratorium. More applications for 830G, but you have to not only approve, but construct and have certificates of occupancy for a certain number of affordable units in order to qualify for the moratorium. We have a project for Vessel in Glastonbury. And somebody did the math in Glastonbury and determined that just to get to the moratorium, Glastonbury would have to build 287 and have 287 affordable units occupied in order to qualify for the moratorium. It's a huge mountain to climb and every community is now struggling with this statutory mandate. And as the chairman, we just finished a great session with the design group. And as the chairman said, everybody speaks in favor of affordable housing until presented with a project and then it gets a little tougher to deal with that. We think that what we're going to present to you is a realistic and appropriate project for the site that we propose to develop. We think that it affords the opportunity to create 24 affordable units. We were required by statute to produce 30% affordable. And those are broken into two groups. 15%, or in our case, 12 units, would have to meet the 60% income standard that's established. And there's a formula where they take either the lower, or I guess, yeah, lower income of either Hartford County, because we're in Hartford County, or the state of Connecticut. In this case, it would be the state of Connecticut standard to establish the income that a family would need at 60% of that number to qualify for an apartment in this development. There would be 12 of those units and there would be 12 units at 80% of the standard income. There's a process, and we've provided a notebook full of materials that explains how that process works, how it's managed, and how people qualify and stay qualified for the affordable housing. All of that has come to pass through the development of 830G standards. And we've presented you with an affordable housing plan that complies with those standards. Aside from hearing from me this evening, you will hear from our project engineer, Seamus Moran, our landscape architect, Tom Grassifah, sorry, Tom, and our traffic engineer, Mark Vertucci, as well as from Josh Levy, who is a representative of Vessel and who can best explain the concept for the vessel plan to bring affordable housing to suburban communities. They have started in Connecticut. Simsbury is one. Glastonbury is another. We'll be going to some meetings in Glastonbury next month. They're in the process in Rocky Hill. And they have a project under construction in New London. So they made a commitment to Connecticut to try to use their system to bring some affordable housing realistically to our state and our communities. George, if you could just go to the site plan. Actually, you could go back one, one, so then we'll go to this one. So this is our site. It's on the easterly side. North is to the top. We're on the easterly side of Hot Meadow Street. That's Route 10. So just so everybody is aware, even though this is a process under 830G, we still are required to secure an inland wetlands permit like any other applicant. We have to demonstrate that we have adequate public water and public sewer, which we do. And we will have to deal with the Connecticut Department of Transportation because we're going to put a driveway access onto a state highway Route 10. Those processes are all like every other development that this commission deals with. The site is actually two pieces separated by the Farmington Canal Bike Trail, Heritage Trail. You see the Farmington River further to the east. This parcel owns two, or this owner and my client would acquire both parcels, 2.39 acres along the river. We propose no development on the east side of the bike path. That would remain scenic and all the way down to the Farmington River. We propose to develop 1.97 acres. That would be the L-shaped piece. On the, just on the eastern side of Hot Meadow, you see the condominium complex that is to the north. We're separated from that complex by the sort of valley that holds the Second Brook. It's fairly steep down to the Brook and then fairly steep back up on both sides, very heavily wooded. That area is not owned by, would not be owned by us and we remain in its current green condition. We have no wetlands on our site, but we are within 100 feet of the wetland associated with Second Brook. And so we're going through the inland wetland process presently, seeking a permit to put some parking drainage structures within the 100-foot upland review area. We have no actual wetlands activity associated with this project. Okay, George, thanks. This is a site plan. Now we're just focused on the L-shaped piece to the west of the bike path, between the bike path and Hot Meadow Road, which is all the way to your left. As I indicated on the, in my earlier remarks, we have provided a zoning data table. We obviously have 1.97 acres, which is far more than the 15,000 square feet required for a lot in the R15 zone. We have about 100, almost 150 feet of frontage where 100 is required. We have the building set, although you have a 35-foot building setback. Our building is about 290 feet from Hot Meadow Road. It's set back in the wider portion of the L-shaped piece, situated well back from the roadway. And obviously, we meet side yard requirements. We're not asking to be able to violate those. Maximum building height, I've already mentioned that, that we do exceed the maximum building height. We have about 33,000 square feet of impervious coverage out of the 85,000 on the site. So we have some more green space than we do impervious on the site. About 50,000 square feet of green space with 33,000 of impervious. And then your regulation will require us to have 160 parking spaces. Where this plan says 94, I said 93. We got comments back from the engineering department and added an additional handicap space, which ate up an additional parking space. So that's why we, the plan you see says 94, but we actually have 93 parking spaces. And I will make one, Mark Vertucci is going to speak to parking in a great deal more detail. I've been involved in a number of multifamily developments in all different communities. It is my opinion, it's only my opinion, that we far overpark multifamily developments, that we create too much blacktop and a lot of the spaces go unused. We just did a little study in Glastonbury. We got a development called the Tannery approved. It's 250 apartment units, fully occupied, 100% occupied. There are 172 cars for 250 units. There are 100 parking spaces that are empty all the time. Could have been green space. So we're now using, when we think about these things, less than one parking space per multifamily dwelling unit. Typically about 0.75, 0.8% of one parking space per unit has proven to be more than adequate. That's just anecdotal opinion of mine. So as I indicated, our proposal would provide 24 affordable units, 12 and 12, meeting the statutory requirements. I did confess to George before the meeting started that I failed to address your plan of conservation and development in the materials that we submitted. I made a reference to it and then I didn't do it. And I don't know why I didn't do it. But I didn't, and so I just want to touch on that now. Your plan of conservation and development calls out the statewide goals, which are to make provisions for the development of housing opportunities, including multifamily dwellings, and to promote housing choices and economic diversity, including housing for low and moderate income households. Those are stated goals. You then state that the town has been working on increasing the number of affordable housing units in ways and locations appropriate for the community. And I would suggest that this is certainly a way to provide it and in a location that lends itself to this kind of development. The opportunity to have public water, public sewer, and access to a state highway, access to transportation, and to be relatively proximate and about a mile away from the town center makes this the kind of location for multifamily and an affordable multifamily project, at least in our opinion. The, in your community survey that you reported, except for a group of community responders who said, "Do nothing." That was the largest group that responded, I think, in your plan, which is not unusual. The survey indicated that there is a desire in the community to develop more affordable housing. They also have statements like, "People need housing that meets their needs." Providing for a range of housing choices for people of all ages and economic characteristics is a stated goal. And seeking ways to help meet the diverse housing needs of present and future residents is also a goal. In addition, you're going to hear some information from Josh about sustainability, which your plan calls out as something that should be a design feature for buildings to be developed in your community, as well as energy conservation efforts. Also, something you're going to find out about tonight that this building achieves. So with apologies for not providing all of that to you in writing, and I will, before we get finished with this, what I want to do is ask our project engineer, Seamus Moran, to come up and walk you through some of the design aspects of the site. And then from there, we'll move through Tom and then Mark and then Josh.
Thank you. Speaking of commission, for the record, my name is Seamus Moran. Professional engineer in Connecticut. I work for H&amp;H Engineering Associates out of Mystic, Connecticut. And I am the project civil engineer on the job. Is this a laser pointer? It is, okay, excellent. Otherwise, I'd be waving my hands and it'd be awkward. Okay, so I'll go over the site design. I'll keep it somewhat high level. I know this is just a receipt application today, so I don't want to burden you with too much here. But as Mr. Alter pointed out, this is a site with, it has a two-lane access drive coming off of Hot Meadow here. There's a total of 94 parking spaces shown right now, which will be reduced to 93 as we add an extra accessible parking space. Point of clarification on the parking calculation, Public Act 21-29, it's one space for a one-bedroom or studio unit, or two spaces for two or more. So what we have is 80-unit apartment complex. That is 77 one-bedrooms and three two-bedrooms, which is 83 required parking spaces. And we are going to have 93 spaces, which 10% is usually a pretty good number for guests or overflow parking spaces that we've seen. So we'll have just above that with our 93 spaces. So that's what we have shown right now. We do have a nice loop road access around the property, which prevents cars from getting stuck behind one another. There's only one little dead end section. The rest is a fairly nice loop section. We do have some concrete sidewalks. I have my pointer here, sidewalk here with a crosswalk and another crosswalk here to a loading area, as you see there. And another sidewalk in front of the building that will connect out to the bike trail to the back here. We do have dumpsters located, this is the main entrance of the building here, so they're in close proximity to the main entrance. It allows for a dump truck to come in, pick up, come in, pick up, back out, and then do a loop to get out. So that's what we have for the site design right now. We also do have some bike racks shown right here, which is impossible to see at the scale, but we do have some bike racks shown. What you see, which we'll get into on the next page, is there's four separate stormwater management areas. Management area A is here. B is behind the building. And then C and D are here, which I'll get into those actually on the next slide, if you would please. Perfect. So as I pointed out, stormwater management area A is this subsurface system here. As you can see from the catch basins in these locations here, this subsurface system is a treatment system for the parking lot. So it collects everything from the parking lot and it delivers it to the subsurface system. Those subsurface, this subsurface system is called an ADS-StormTech MC 3500 with isolator rows. So these two rows that were the drainage lines are contributing to, they're wrapped in fabric. And what it does is it removes the constituents from, using that fabric. And those are sized for what would normally be the water quality event, which is the one-inch storm event. They're actually sized just based on the layout for in excess of the 100-year storm event. So every storm that comes through this parking lot will be, all of the water will be treated through that water, through that isolator row. It also shows enough stormwater detention that the peak rates are reduced heading from south to north. The discharges to the north towards Second Brook, towards the wetland. However, we are reducing that peak rate for that event. The second practice, stormwater management area B, is a low impact development practice. It's a rain garden by our retention basin for their clean roof runoff. Roof runoff is generally considered clean and we want to put it in the rain garden. We can dress it up a little bit and allow it to infiltrate. That is sized to infiltrate the 25-year storm event before discharging. And that outlet pipe here, discharging is in this location here. So that's the second items, or stormwater management areas C and D. Those are, this is just essentially a grass, a very shallow pitched grass area that serves as detention for off-site stormwater. So the grade, as it's from Second Brook, works its way up. So that these properties here to the south are at a higher elevation. So the stormwater that's coming off of these properties, we're just capturing that before it gets into the parking lot. It's generally, would be considered clean. It's coming from the grass area next door. So we'll capture that and allow it to infiltrate in these two practices. That's not for anything for our site really, but we're just preventing that runoff from coming into our development. We had really good soils out here. We did have field-measured infiltration rates of about 100 inches per hour, which was, the geotechnical engineer said, "Well, let's use a 40 inches per hour for measured rates, just for conservative purposes." And then we reduced that to 20 inches per hour per the stormwater quality manual, which is a factor of safety of essentially five from what was approved. We do, we are planning to do more soil testing out here. We had received some comments from the town engineer. So we're going to work with him to find out what's the most appropriate use of this and the most appropriate infiltration rate. So we have additional testing that's ongoing, or will be ongoing, in the next few days to determine what that permeability rate is. I think that's probably for stormwater. If you could move to the next one, please. So this is the photometric plan. And what is kind of tough to see at the scale is there's these kind of balloons here that are circling these, each of these light fixtures. And what you can't tell on this is that we're just showing that these light fixtures on the site, we're not, obviously, we're not, we're not showing any light pollution onto neighboring properties. So that's what this plan is. What I don't think is on, in our slideshow is utilities. As I think we, as Mr. Alter pointed out, we have public water, public sewer, and electric available in Hot Meadow, and we will connect all of those out to Hot Meadow. So with that, I think, I think Mark will hop up here now and talk about our traffic study.
Good evening. I'm Mark Vertucci. I'm a senior transportation engineer and vice president at Fussin O'Neil, 146 Hartford Road in Manchester. Also a registered professional engineer and professional traffic operations engineer as well. Fussin O'Neil did prepare a traffic impact study, so I just want to briefly describe the findings for you here this evening. Just to orient you to the site again, it's located here on the east side of Hot Meadow Street. This little dot is the Powder Forest Drive intersection. We're approximately 250 feet north of that intersection where the driveway is proposed. So it's kind of out of the influence of the intersection and the queues from the traffic signal. So, and we also have ample bypass width there as well in the southbound direction with that right turn lane that goes into Powder Forest Drive. As part of the study, we did do, we looked at two study intersections. We looked at the site driveway as well as the intersection with Powder Forest Drive at the traffic signal. We conducted turning movement counts at both of those intersections back in October. The counts did reveal the morning peak hour of traffic was 7:00 to 8:00 a.m. And the afternoon peak hour of traffic was 4:30 to 5:30. So we subsequently analyzed those peak hours. We then consulted the Department of Transportation for a growth rate. We expect the design year, the build year of this development is likely 2024. So they did indicate a growth rate of 6 tenths of a percent per year. So we grew those traffic volumes out two years. So we grew those traffic volumes out two years by that rate. And as far as the traffic generated from this development, we utilize rates provided in the ITE Trip Generation Manual, which is an industry-accepted resource for determining traffic generation for various land uses. So for this multifamily residential development, the manual projects, we're going to generate 30 trips in the morning peak hour of traffic, so seven entering and 23 exiting, and approximately 32 trips in the afternoon peak hour, 19 entering and 13 exiting. So as you can see, this is a very low generating land use. We then conducted a capacity analysis, looking at the two study intersections. So we reviewed background conditions, which is current, or the 2024 conditions without the development traffic. We added the site-generated traffic to determine the 2024 combined or build conditions with the development traffic. And then we did an analysis at the intersections for both condition to determine levels of service at these intersections. The level of service is basically a report card-type scale, you know, calculating what the operation of the intersection is. It's rated on an A to F scale, so A is a condition of low delay or efficient traffic operations. F is a condition of high delay, high driver frustration. Typically, the DOT considers level of service D as the minimal acceptable level of service. So the analysis revealed at the intersection of Hot Meadow at Powder Forest Drive at the traffic signal, that intersection operates efficiently at level service A for all conditions. There's no reduction in level of service as a result of the additional development traffic. The site driveway is anticipated to operate efficiently at level service A for turns into the driveway, and for traffic exiting the driveway, level service B in the morning peak hour, and C in the afternoon peak hour, which is an acceptable operation as well. Q increases at the signal where, on average, one vehicle length or less. And I did want to point out, the southbound queues at Hot Meadow at Powder Forest approaching the signal extend to about 220 feet at their longest in the afternoon peak hour. And as I mentioned, the driveway is about 250 feet. So the queues are contained just south of the driveway. So it should not block the driveway. If there are any blockages, they would be infrequent and likely during the highest peak hour of the day, and they would clear every time that signal turns green. From a safety perspective, let's see here, how do we advance the slide? Oh, you got it? Okay, yep. We did look at intersection sightlines from the driveway. The sightlines were measured in accordance with a criteria in the DOT Highway Design Manual. The sight distances were measured to exceed the 445 feet required by DOT for the 40 mile-per-hour design speeds on the road, so the driveway will provide safe egress for vehicles exiting. Crash analysis was also reviewed. The latest three years of available data from the Yukon Crash Repository was reviewed. There were no abnormal crash patterns or frequencies in the study area, and we also did not, I know, I should say there were no abnormal crash frequencies or severities, and we did not identify any crash patterns. We did have one recommendation. The recommendation is to break the double-yellow center line at the site driveway. So it's currently that, there's a stripe median that's widening as it approaches Powder Forest Drive. So there's four yellow lines, so technically that means you can't turn left in or left out. So we are proposing a striping revision there to break those lines. That'll be reviewed by DOT during the encroachment permit process. But that was the only recommendation of the study. The conclusion overall is that the proposed residential development will not have a significant impact to traffic operations within the study area. As I mentioned, the DOT encroachment permit will be required for work in the state right-of-way. That includes the striping revision I talked about, as well as the, just the construction of the driveway curb cut in general. So this road is under their jurisdiction, so they'll be thoroughly reviewing this. That gives you a level of comfort. I did want to touch, before I finish, I wanted to touch on the parking, as Peter had mentioned. We also looked at parking demand rates here. So the ITE, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, much like they publish a trip generation manual, they also publish a parking generation manual. And they recently updated that to the fifth edition, so it has some recent data in it, recent studies. So this is an industry-accepted resource for determining parking generation. So we looked at the manual in the Land Use Code 221, which is multifamily housing mid-rise suburban, which is what we have here. And the manual indicated a weekday peak parking demand rate of .75 spaces per bedroom. And on a Saturday, the peak demand rate was .77 spaces per bedroom. This is based on 35 studies. So these are sites all around the country that are counted. After they're built and they're fully occupied, studies are done, they go out and they count, they count the spaces at these sites and what the demand is. And they count them during the peak demand periods, which is 10 o'clock in the evening to 5:00 in the morning, like the overnight periods when everybody's home and they're sleeping. I did want to note, of those 35 studies, the range of rates was .41 spaces per bedroom at the lowest to one, one space per bedroom at the highest. So the highest rate of all those 35 that were counted was one space per bedroom, which is exactly what your, the state statute is here, which would require 83 spaces, as has been mentioned before. Again, we're providing 93 spaces. That's 31 spaces more than what ITE recommends, 10 spaces more than what the state of Connecticut recommends. So we're very confident that the site provides ample parking for the residents with additional overflow space of 10 spaces for, you know, for residents or guests. With that, I'm going to, I can either, we're going to take questions.
Two traffic questions, please.
Sure, if you want to take questions.
So you're talking about re-striping of the road?
Yep.
Has anybody proposed a left turn?
There's actually, there's bypass width there, as I mentioned. So there's a southbound right turn lane that is actually...
Yeah, there's bypass, but you have traffic going straight, and then you have traffic already turning onto Powder Forest, so there's...
Well, that southbound right turn lane there is approximately 300 feet in the existing condition, so it's, the analysis shows that there's virtually never a queue there. There's maybe one or, one or two cars that queue at that signal, so that right turn lane is vacant almost all the time. So what I'm saying by bypass is if, if somebody was waiting in the through lane to turn left into the site, there's bypass in the right turn lane for vehicles to get around. So typically, what the DOT would do here in this situation, if that right turn lane wasn't there, they would require that we provide that bypass. And what bypass is, is essentially a wide shoulder. It's like an eight-foot shoulder. So we have even better than that here. We actually have a full 12-foot lane they can bypass in. So I don't expect that the DOT would, when they review this, would require an additional left turn lane. It would just be, it'd be more pavement width, be a little bit more capacity than we need here.
Is there a signal here?
There's a signal at Powder Forest Drive.
Right, so not here.
It doesn't meet the warrants, and there's not enough traffic at the driveway. And the state also, they like to keep 500-foot separation from signals. I believe the next one down is Stratton Brook. So there's, you know, they're spaced 500 feet or greater apart, so even if it did meet the warrants, they probably wouldn't, wouldn't allow one here. But it, but we're not even close. The volumes are only, there's like 10 to 15 cars coming out, and I think in the, the rate was, yeah, 23 exiting in the morning was the highest, so that's like one car every three minutes, just as a point of reference.
Maybe more layman's terms. The 30 at peak hour, now, I'm not a traffic engineer, that does seem low to me, though. Could you go into maybe a little simpler language of like how you come to that kind of thing, that kind of conclusion?
Yeah, I mean, again, it's, it's rates in the ITE manual. So they go out and they count dozens of similar developments, and they come up with a trip generation rate. So in this case, the 30 trips in the morning would be seven entering and 23 exiting, because you get more people leaving in the morning than coming in, whereas in the afternoon, you get 19 entering and 13 exiting. So this is only 80 units. These rates I'm talking about are the peak hour, the highest hour of the day. So, so there could be more, there will be more coming in the hour before the peak hour and the hour after, but I'm talking about the highest hours of the day.
So I was wondering why that didn't add up to 80. Did they not leave?
So, but, but to be, if I might, but to be fair, you picked the manual that gave you the number 23, and you picked the other developments to which you compared potential uses under the manual that you picked, correct? Because I'm also struggling with the idea that there are only going to be 30 trips total in and out at that rush hour. I go in and out of my house at three ti, three times at that hour of the day. I go right to the mobile station right next door to get my coffee, then I go home, I take my kid to school, then I come back and I, let's pretend I go to the gym. I don't, but I could, right? And, and all of that would be, you know, within that peak hour. So I, I'm really struggling to believe that that's 30 trips only. And you said that you weren't required to put in a turn lane because there's not enough traffic, but isn't the conclusion that there's not enough traffic because you picked the manual and you picked the developments that you compared it to, so you come up with a conclusion that there's not enough traffic?
I don't follow that, sorry.
I follow.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not picking and choosing manuals, but this is an industry-accepted resource.
Are there other industry-accepted resources that might have come up with different conclusions?
This is, this is a national manual. It's got...
Are there other national manuals?
No. This one's got hundreds of land uses in it.
Which land use did you use to come up with 30 out of, out of 90 units?
This is 221, which is a mid-rise residential suburban development. So hundreds of studies around the country. There's been post-studies, these are post-studies that are done after the developments are built. We've done, we've gone back and looked at similar studies in this area, and these rates are solid. This manual was recently updated in the last couple of years, so it's got a lot of good data. It's the manual that is used by the Department of Transportation, the Planning Bureau. This is what they will be looking for when we submit for the encroachment permit. These are the rates they'll be looking for. And again, you got, you got to, you got to think about, you know, focusing on the, this is, the rates I'm talking about are the peak hour, as I was saying, 7:00 to 8:00. Some people are going to leave 6:00 to 7:00, some will leave 8:00 to 9:00, some will leave 9:00 to 10:00. So could there be 80 trips leaving throughout the course of the morning? Yes, but not everybody leaves at the same time. People have different work hours, people work hybrid, they work remote, some people don't work at all. So, you know, these, these rates have been studied thoroughly and corroborated.
You submitted that full report through your planner, and we certainly welcome your town engineers' review of it, or whomever else. I'll reuse those reports for you, but as Mark indicated, the manual that he uses is the manual. It's the only one that anybody uses.
Yeah, one other, one other point, because I would, my wife would say...
Yeah, you need to identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Josh Levy from Vessel.
Oh, hi, Josh.
So my wife would say the same things to you, right? In fact, I saw her this morning before I left, I left later than I normally do today. So I sort of actually leave the house, drop my son off at high school, come back, drop my daughter off at middle school, and then leave to go to Hot Yobit. So the, I think the big difference here, obviously, is, you know, we're talking about 77 one-bedroom units, so our tenants aren't going to necessarily be going out to drop off kids multiple times. Most of our tenants are going to be leaving to go to work and then coming back in the evening. They might come back more than once if they came back, then went back out for dinner or something like that. But it's not the, it's not the same level of usage you get with either bigger units in an apartment building, which would generate, you know, other uses, or in single-family homes.
That is a good point. A lot of these studies in the ITE manual are based on a random mix of developments that have two, three-bedroom, you know, cross-section of units, and this one being primarily one-bedroom, if anything, there's sort of conservative rates.
Sir, you might not know this, which I'm not sure if it would really be your area, but the closest bus station, do you know where that is to this?
Yeah, so if you're, if you're standing at the property and you were looking to, if you were facing the property, looking to the right, you'd see the Mitchell Car Dealership.
Yeah.
And behind that, you'd see the River View. Right in between those two areas is where the bus stop is.
Yeah.
So if you leave the property from the back side...
It's accessible by the bike path.
That's exactly right. It's about, I've walked it probably like about, you know, 15 or 20 times at this point, but you can, you can walk right down to the, which is what's, one of the things that's so attractive about the site. And then you're within about a mile from the dead center of town in order to take the bike path right into the center of town, too. So it's, while, while Hot Meadow is not particularly pedestrian-friendly, the bike path, obviously, is not really special, it makes it pedestrian-friendly.
How many bike racks were you guys planning on putting in?
Do we show right now? We have 12 shown right now. Yeah, I mean, you know, we're sort of flexible on that. We'll, we'll flex with, you know, how many people have bikes and who's using them, you know, walkers, runners, things like that, in order to, you know, allow for, you know, property usage and people to, to go to the area, which is a really special part of, obviously, Simsbury as a whole, and also the site.
Yes, as someone who grew up on the Farmington River, I'm inclined to agree that it is a good area, so I'm glad that they'll be able to have access to that recreation if it, if it goes through, so.
Yeah, it's a special, it's a special area.
Any more traffic questions? Your next presenter.
Yep, we do have a little bit more presentation.
My name is Tom Grisafa. I'm landscape architect, yeah, I live in Manchester. And I've been in the business about 45 years, so I've had broad experience with different kinds of site development. This site, as a profession that, that I have been in, would be recognized as a gift. You got a river, you got a stream, you're close to everything, you got a path, it's in a safe area, and so it, that's a big umbrella waiting for something nice to happen under it. So what you're looking at with the, with the landscape plan, the actual planting plan, is a series of different sizes of plant material, which are easy enough to look at how big the circle is. Shade tree, evergreen tree with quite a bit more, those are just graphic images to separate them. So we have a group of those here. Smaller material that's blooming, shrubs, smaller, meaning six to eight feet, something like that. So they're, they're out there in the open trying to prevent vision all the way back to the, to the building, which is pushing, would we say, 300 feet, coming back into the building from, from the street. And we're using, in conjunction, you'll hear Josh talk about, doing things that are cost-effective, doing things that are necessary but not over the top, and, and doing it all with an intent to save what we can for trees and put in additional materials that helps create an atmosphere for enjoyment of this, of this, this site. There are two open areas, let's call them. Here is a small rain garden, and the path is running right here. So that rain garden is surrounded with various kinds of plant materials that help give the rooms on this side of the first floor especially privacy, and something nice to look at. This is much larger and less sloping, so it's, it's an infiltration area, so it doesn't, except probably in a huge storm, have any standing water for any length of time. And it has larger material because we have neighbors over here that we want to make sure are screened, and, and it works on both ways. So people who live in this unit aren't looking all the way out at the street or somebody else here. Along the south property line... Uh, along the south property line, we use tall grasses because nobody's really, um, living here, obviously. Uh, uh, those are meant to screen the cars, and we have a couple of large, uh, shade trees. We're using shade trees along the north property line in a different fashion as, as they are here because the ground falls off twenty-five, thirty feet going down to the creek. And this gives us like a visual canopy and a realistic canopy, and something that starts to reinforce the existing trees that are on that slope. I could talk about varieties, you have a plan in front of you, and I think that's perhaps for another day. But I'm willing to answer questions about it. And I think the, the, uh, one of the overriding principles we used in this is that we're using almost all native plants. And, uh, the plants in the, in the, uh, rain gardens are natives. Many, almost all the other ones are as well. And we're doing that as a, almost as a constant nowadays because it has such a, uh, high impact on how much fertilizer you use and how much water you have to use. And so we're using grasses here in a, what you'd call a lawn area, that are very low maintenance and, uh, a type of fescue that lays down rather than stands up so that we have less maintenance to do, no fertilization to do. And, uh, using, uh, water as carefully as we can to make sure these get established. But they're not, um, rampant users of, um, materials. So I'll stop here, you've listened to a lot of stuff up here.
Is there any landscaping current?
Pardon me?
Is there any of the landscaping current or, you know, because there is trees on the property now, are any being saved?
There will be, there'll be, there will be several trees, trees especially, uh, near Hot Meadow that will be saved. We, we didn't have them on a survey, they aren't measured out. Um, as, as little as we can disturb the areas around them, the, the more there'll be. Uh, but there's, um, that's, that's a high priority. We heard that on the last meeting.
As far as what you can keep and what you can't.
Well, there are large oaks, there's, um, oaks, maples, um, lindens, black cherries, yes, so.
What about the trees that are down the embankment toward the Hazel Meadow?
Um, they're not, they're not touched. So, so that's the, where the slope really starts. It has, actually, it's progressed at that point, this, the top of the slope might be more like this.
Do, do you have a, a wall, do you, do you have a retaining wall?
There, there is. Um, Seamus could fill me in on this one. Seamus, is it thirty inches, thirty-six?
Yeah, Seamus, we're in, so, yeah, the wall varies. Um, there's a small wall you can kind of see from this plan here to this point, and then another L-shaped wall here. And this varies between, you know, six inches here up to four feet right around here, back down to about twenty-four inches here. Same over here, this wall is about twenty-four to thirty-six inches tall.
What's the purpose of the wall?
Just for grading, so we can, um, maintain a three-to-one slope, um, on the down gradient side of the wall, and then provide, uh, a, a flat area from the edge of the parking, um, to the edge of the wall. So that way it doesn't slope right down.
So because, because I'm not an engineer, explain for me. So when the water is rising up from Second Brook?
Yeah.
Because that's what happens, the Farmington rises, and then before it overflows, it comes up Second Brook, and then it starts to rise. And I know that some of the units in the other place, the lower lying than your, than your subject parcel. And some of those properties get flooded on occasion right now. So will the wall that you're building do anything to hold the water back at all? Will it increase the flooding into the other parcels?
No, it won't do any of those. So we're not in a flood zone here, um, the,
Right, but the other folks are. So will, will there be anything that your wall does to prevent water from rising and, and pushing the water toward the other side at all, or?
No, so, so if we weren't capturing and treating and discharging the runoff, it could potentially do that. Um, however, all of the parking lot is being captured, um, and it's all going to a subsurface infiltration system that the bottom of that infiltration system's below the bottom of the wall. So the water that's discharging and infiltrating is below the bottom of the proposed retaining wall. So it won't,
They're keeping their water on the property.
Correct.
Where does it get discharged eventually, 'cause?
So if, for an overflow condition, so it infiltrates through the two-year storm event, and then slowly meters it out, there's an outlet control structure in there that meters the, the flow out.
Okay.
So from out, from the system that's here, there's a pipe that goes here to stone. Um, and what we, what we evaluate is the peak rate and the volume that gets to this point, essentially, that gets to the northern property line. We evaluate all of that to see, say, for example, if it's ten CFS for the hundred-year storm event, um, we're showing a reduction of that number for the hundred-year storm event at that point.
But if there's a pipe right there, does it go out to Second Brook?
It, yes, it would discharge to the stone, dissipate in the stone, and then sheet flow for, over the stone, um, then down the hill.
But at a slower rate than it's discharging today.
Correct.
It would be slower then.
At a certain rate, um, even under this hundred-year storm event, the discharge, because essentially, from a layman's perspective, because I'm not an engineer, we, we capture the water underground, and then the system itself lets it out very slowly. It's controlled, as opposed to sheet, uh, surfaces where it just, it goes wherever it wants. So we're controlling that laying out. So the flow that you actually let off-site is actually slower than it would be today. Um, which is, if you could ever get it that way, the best standard, the standard for state of Connecticut is they keep it the same as, as we.
Thank you for the explanation.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did anybody else have?
Yeah, so you'll keep whatever mature trees you can?
Absolutely.
By, my other question, I think you were saying this too. Is there going to be any privacy barrier from the path to those lower-level units?
There's physically a, a change, yeah, there's a change in elevation that's doing that.
So there's, there's a change in elevation to the two sides. Um, there's going to be plantings on that edge here in order to create privacy of, you know, different levels of plantings in terms of grasses, ornamental grasses, like you would see, um, and trees in order to block off two different viewpoints, right? So we want to think about the views from different, um, angles. So somebody riding a bike has a different visual than somebody who's on foot versus, you know, somebody else. The only two options, I guess, on the trail.
Right.
Um, and so you have the low-lying plants as well as the upper canopy in order to block out the views, um, for both the tenant base as well as for the people who are on the trail.
Right.
So that's going to impose sort of a privacy area. Then there's a change in grade between the building and the, uh, and the trail itself, which is also going to impose a barrier too. Yeah.
Okay.
Um, which is also going to impose a barrier as well. And that's part of this, uh, rain garden that we have here in terms of, the rain garden has to go in in order to capture the water and then, uh, discharge it. We're not proposing like a fence along here for a couple of reasons. One is, you know, it creates a, um, you know, sort of a barrier to like, that tells people to keep out. The other thing is that historically, what we've seen, at least on multifamily properties, but I just had the property at my own house as well, is that especially in areas where you have dense vegetation and where we have inclement weather, that te- te- fences tend to get damaged and have problems over time. And they tend to not look great after a while, they just wear very poorly in terms of, you know, uh, in terms of usage. And so we prefer to use landscaping where we can in order to create that barrier because it creates a more lasting impact
Yep.
that can be pretty all the time as opposed to big enough.
I was just looking for privacy for that.
Yep.
For the, not for the people on the path so much, as the people that are there.
Yeah.
And then to follow up, where you had said grasses, Tom, on the side where the parking lot is, with that next to butter, you said there were going to be grasses?
Yes.
Are there also mature trees? I'm just, if that neighbor, they don't necessarily want to see ninety-three cars.
If they are there, we, we will not use the trees, you know, as I've indicated, we'll keep the ones that are there. I think the, the grasses are, uh, like a four-foot tall, it's called a carrel forster, if you're familiar with them at all. And, you know, so it's, it's, it'll do the job, but a tree is going to overrule these whenever we can save them. It's a little, much of a, I mean, it's, it's hard to explain it here without seeing it outside, on-site.
Yeah, a, a couple of things. So there are trees on the site that exist next door, um, for everybody who's, you know, you guys all live in the community, you know more than I do. Um, so this house isn't actually occupied. Um, the house itself actually is unfortunately falling down, the whole back of it is off. Um, and, um, and so, um, you know, it, it's, it's certainly a, um, a concern, you know, from, from our perspective for just the safety of the community. Uh, we hope that over time, there's an opportunity where, you know, the house, um, is maybe taken down.
Yeah.
Um, but, um, but that's certainly, we're, we're not going to disturb anything associated with that. And that obviously will produce additional, you know, buffers from both the street perspective as well as from the, the side.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Let me just offer one comment that, uh, I, I'm not trying to dissuade from, uh, you know, the, the depiction you have of the plantings that are, the separation really to the drop-off with the river. But the Hazel Meadow development almost entirely has fencing, wooden fencing. And north of that, wooden fencing on both sides of the railroad track. Now, in Hazel Meadow, there's an opening in that wall as the road goes through. There are houses on the other side of the railroad track before the river. My point is just that, you know, dismissing wooden fencing as, you know, it gives the message, we don't want people here, or don't come this way, or whatever. But there's a lot of people who beat you to it. There's a lot of wooden fencing there. You know, they're not afraid of the message it gives. And so if there's, you know, some merit to it,
Yeah.
I'd give it a little more consideration because there's a lot of it in there.
We can certainly look at, I know the fencing you're talking about, it's sort of that stockade fence that, um, has that stuff.
Yeah.
I think the, the only concern about it is, I was just out there a couple of days ago, actually, um, taking a walk on the path with, uh, with someone giving, you know, showing them sort of a tour. Um, and some of it was, uh, collapsed, you know, there was already parts of it that were collapsing. And so we try to avoid those kinds of things because, you know, one of the things Tom was talking about in terms of landscaping, and just to sort of fill it in, is a big portion of what we're concerned about from a landscaping perspective is conservation.
Mm-hmm.
So what do we worry about for conservation? The use of water, obviously. We don't live in California, so we don't have to really worry about it that, that much, I guess. But it's still a natural resource, and we want to make sure we don't use, um, you know, more than we need to. And so all of the plants we use and the way we go about it are intended to prevent needing, you know, extra irrigation systems so that you don't have to irrigate it using up water. The other thing is, you know, Tom mentioned native planting. So very important, become a hot topic sort of everywhere in terms of using native plants. We think it's great for, you know, a variety of reasons, one, it's consistent with the locale. But also, it leads to the fact that you don't have plants that are unnecessarily dying and looking poorly over the course of time. So one of the things we saw, we've owned and managed over twenty thousand units of multifamily housing, is that, you know, most, you know, developers, even the ones who have the best intentions and go in and put these robust landscaping packages in, three, four, five years later, that seems generous in most cases, but they end up not looking very good, why don't they look good? So we, and we spent a lot of time looking at this on our own properties over the course of the years that we owned them. Normally, a lot of low-lying plants, right? What happens with those? People walk out, they have gum in their mouth, they throw them in the plants, they walk out, maybe they start smoking, they throw a cigarette in the plant, we hope that's not true, not, you know, we don't want, we don't want our tenant smoking if we can avoid it, um, just for their own health. Um, they, they have dogs or something like that, they come out, the dog goes to the bathroom on the plants, they die. That's the ultimate resolution of it. And then because it's, you know, five years in, that what ends up happening is those people never replace the plants, and they end up looking horrible. And so while, while as members of the community, we drive by, you see them and you're like, oh, God, this doesn't look so great anymore. So what we try to do is look for things that are drought-resistant, insect-resistant, you know, uh, can maintain itself even in, um, you know, harsh winter conditions. We also look to use as many tall plants as possible, meaning ornamental trees, evergreens, shade trees. When we do use lower-lying plants, like, as Tom was saying, you know, ornamental grasses on this end, we use them because they're so hardy and you can put snow on them for the whole winter. And if, you know, anybody's, you know, you know, house is like mine, my ornamental glasses are the only thing that ever work, you know, ever sort of come back the next year. And you don't have to do anything with them. You literally, some people cut them down during the winter, other people keep them up. Either way, they still look great the next season. And so they become the opportunity to have something that keeps looking really good. And then you pepper in these other opportunities where you have, you know, these other trees and stuff like that in order to create diversity of species, shade. You know, one thing also, you know, from a conservation perspective on the parking, because I know parking is always, you know, sort of a hot topic, and we're super concerned about that as well because if you don't have enough parking for tenants, tenants stop coming, we don't like that. Um, it's bad for rental purposes. But one of the things, you know, about parking is the urban heat index. And so what we're really sensitive to is really thinking about how you can have the right number of parking spaces. We don't want people parking on Hot Meadow Street, that'd be super dangerous for both them and for the community. We don't want people not renting because we don't have enough parking for them. But we want to make sure that we don't over-park so that we increase the urban heat index and do something that's negative for the environment at the same time. So we try to spend a lot of time thinking about that and how to balance those things out from a conservation perspective.
One thing I'll say about the fence is I, I'm inclined to agree with you. There's a, there's a fence right now between the Willow Arms development and, um, and the Heights in Terrafill. And, wait, I don't know why it was put in in the first place, but it, it's just, it's rust, that's all it is now. It looks bad, it gets weird separation between the two communities to where they seem much more separate than they ought to be considering their, their, uh, their distance from each other. So I, I, I kind of agree with the fence thing, I don't know that, you know, I mean, whatever makes sense, but, you know.
Josh, let's move on to Vessel.
I think we have another question.
Yeah, so I'm sure somebody has already asked you this, I'm sure you've planned for it, but you can get a fire truck in and out and around there, right?
Absolutely, hundred percent. Yeah, that's part of the site design that's sort of terrific about this is the,
And it can, it has a good turn radius and all that.
Turn radiuses that allow for that. You know, a garbage truck would come in here, they'll pull in, it will take the, uh, dumpsters, and then it will pull out. And it, it has the ability to essentially reverse in and then pull out straight, or to pull back straight and then reverse around. That sort of is optimal for purposes of traffic flow in the building. But yeah, absolutely, something we're, you know, obviously always concerned about. Um, I'll tell you more about the building from sort of a health and safety perspective, and we can talk about that as to, you know, sort of, um, the fire truck question as well.
One last question on the outside. So I saw the path that connects to the trail.
Mm-hmm.
Is there going to be any access for your renters to get to the river?
So we have not contemplated access to the river for one very specific reason, which is, as soon as you have a multifamily building and you have access to the river, it has to be ADA compliant, and that is a very, very steep slope.
Okay.
Um, so we wanted to originally, it was one of the things that we thought would be very cool about it. But you would need a, um, and essentially an enormous, um, ramp, uh, in order to get down there. You can't just have like a, a natural step, or a trail or something like that, because it's not ADA accessible.
So actually, thank you for my, sorry, reminding me of that. So on the very first slide, you showed that this parcel, it's not the same parcel, right? It's two unit, two different parcels owned by the same owner, or is it one parcel? Yeah, is it technically one parcel that got divided by the?
It's two, it's two separate parcels, it will be owned by the same owner. It's currently owned by the same owner, and it will continue to be owned by the same owner. I suppose it could be sort of consolidated for law purposes. Um, but the intent was to keep it, you know, uh, in its current form also.
So are, is that, if one wanted to, is that buildable? Is it, is that wetland, is it? Because, because it seems to me like there are, but there are three other parcels that are, two of those are for sale, one of which, and one of which people would like to buy and, and turn over.
Stephen and Mark had owned, uh, Mitchell had owned these.
Yeah, so those, that, that parcel is accessible through one of the other lots or through the Mitchell area.
It's accept, it's, well, it's accessible through our lot too, you know, based on the way it is. It's divided by the bike path. You're not allowed to bring, uh, any automobiles across the bike path.
Do it in Hazel Meadow.
I don't know how they got that done, but I know the rule is,
Because they were there before.
Maybe that's why.
I think that they're, you know, let's pretend you, what I, you know what I'm getting at. Is, is this simply a precursor to actually building on that lot?
No, we have no intention of building on the lot.
Okay.
Um, it's, you know,
Are you donating as open space to the town?
Um, we actually, we spoke about that at the beginning, um,
Not a pressure, not saying it's a condition.
We would be happy to donate as open space to the town if the town wanted it, I think.
Or it could just be eased as open spaces.
I was gonna say, I think George was gonna say, I prefer not to take it, I don't want your land. Um, but, but our,
It could be preserved.
But yes, we're, we're happy to preserve it. The only thing we've thought about doing is right at the top, uh, over here, we've thought about maybe putting in some benches or something like that that could be used by the community who were like, you know, running, walking, somebody gets tired, they want to have a sip of water, or whatever it is.
Or one of your renters who's got a dog or what, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because you've got,
So you've got a slope there, right?
Uh, once you get past like this top area, yeah, it gets pretty sloopy.
Okay.
Um, there's a lot of grade change, which is why, you know, we just actually were showing visuals to the, um, Architectural Design Review Committee. From the Farmington River, you can't, you know, see the building because you're so far below here, and you have all this dense vegetation between you and the, and the site itself.
It was on cruise, though?
Okay, next presenter.
It's me?
George will find it or we won't, it's okay. So.
We have, we've seen it.
You've seen it, so I don't need to, we don't need it then, George, it's fine. Okay, so, you know, first off, thank you for having me here, I really appreciate it, appreciate the opportunity to present to you. I'll, I'll give you a brief explanation because George is gonna kill me if I talk for too long about who Vessel is and, you know, how we sort of came here. So I've been in the multifamily industry for about 20 years, my partner has been a few more. But we came from very different areas in the multifamily space. He on the luxury end of the spectrum and I actually started out in what was traditional affordable housing, so developing housing with tax credits and, and other public subsidies. And when we met, the first property we did was saving a distressed affordable housing deal that HUD was going to foreclose on and the state agency had financed and they needed help on it. And so we went about and they asked us if we could save it and we, we did and we did a whole rehab on it and put millions of dollars into the property, turned it around, won a turnaround award from the agency. It ended up in their annual review in their, you know, in the packet that they send around every year. And they sent us a management turnaround award for it and they were thrilled. And he looked at me and he said, you've been in the craziest business I've ever seen. It's anything but affordable, it's just heavily subsidized. And it doesn't actually get to the sort of the heart of the problem, which is how do we provide housing that as we sort of refer to it as a launchpad for people's dreams, but also that's what the community itself needs? And when you start getting into public subsidies and things like that, you're beholden to them. You don't get to do what's right for the communities. And so what we started to do was think about everything that was wrong with the multifamily industry, right? Buildings had gotten way too big, they were 150 to 300 units at minimum, you needed these massive developments, then you end up with tons and tons of cars. They were, you know, the biggest contributor to landfills, fossil fuels, not sustainable, not green, not technologically advanced, not particularly healthy, right? Tons of off-gassing and other problems in buildings that aren't great for tenants. There's always mold in built, in existing buildings because there's always slow leaks behind an inaccessible wall or infiltration into the building from water from the outside causes all sorts of problems for, you know, for the tenants, for the building and then for the community. And so, you know, as we were thinking about the design of a building and how could we make a building that was the highest quality building possible but could actually address a community's needs, my partner started working on the design elements of it and I started working on the community elements of it and went along, round and met with about 120 different communities across three different states, Connecticut being one of them, New Jersey, and then Pennsylvania, actually Maryland as well. And the refrain that we always heard from people was, we have no housing for three groups of people. We have no housing for all of our essential workers, for our teachers, for our municipal employees, for our police officers. We don't have housing that is right for them, especially at the early stages of their careers, when really they're earning something like $60,000 to $70,000 a year, which means they can afford something like $1,575 to $1,700 a month in housing before their housing costs burden. They also kept saying, because we don't have housing for our seniors who are existing community members, need to downsize, they're in older homes, those homes are starting to cause a lot of problems for them in that they're costly because you have to replace all sorts of stuff, but there's really nowhere for them to downsize to that they want to live in and that also isn't an upcharge on where they're currently living, because they're already locked in at their old price and very often don't have a mortgage anymore on their property. And on top of that, we don't have any housing for young people to return to the community. And obviously from an economic perspective, who are the best people in your community? They're young people who have expendable income to go, you know, into your stores and coffee shops and restaurants and bars. And people who are empty nesters who are no longer paying for their kids with all of their money like I am, they can actually go back out into the community and spend their money as well. And so what we started to think about was what could we do in order to produce housing like that? And that was the genesis of Vessel, which was to produce something that was the most technologically advanced housing possible, also the safest housing possible. So the building you're looking at right now, you know, that you have in front of you, most of you, is a steel building. It's built through a panelization system that allows us to deliver it quickly to the community. So our typical building takes about four weeks to erect on site, about six to maybe eight months in total construction time period, so we can produce the units very quickly, very efficiently, you know, and provide housing to communities when they need it, not, you know, 36 months or 48 months later, when, you know, the problem's already compounded upon itself. The building from a safety perspective, non-combustible, fully alarmed, fully sprinkled, controlled ingress and egress. So, you know, safety being a paramount concern, you know, when we had a firefighter actually visit one of our buildings, he brought his whole team in because he couldn't believe, you know, that, you know, the way he was going to be able to address the building was so different because he didn't have things, for instance, like drywall or paint in the building. So none of our units have it. Why? It's a maintenance nightmare, it's a disaster for tenants, it's a disaster for owners. So we replaced that with an interior panelization system. Our panels are made from something that's hypoallergenic, it's antimicrobial, and it's fairly indestructible. It's a sustainable product. It's so sustainable, in fact, that the, you, you can use the panel on one side, if it were ever to get destroyed, you can flip it onto the other side and use it. If both sides get destroyed, you can send them back to factories and they burn them in order to create new panels. So it's sort of a cradle to cradle, cradle philosophy for purposes of sustainability. But, you know, in doing that, what did we do? We got away from inaccessible walls that have all of your most important systems behind them, namely your plumbing and electric, which is where you end up with problems in a building as it ages. So if anything were ever go wrong in our building, we can get to those systems incredibly quickly in a matter of seconds and take care of the problem. We also don't have the problem of like molds growing behind a wall or anything like that because you can't grow mold on the materials that we use. The units themselves are built with the idea of, you know, the, providing the tenants with the best possible product from a number of different areas. So nine-foot ceilings, floor-to-ceiling windows, tons of natural light, the whole building is what we would call a software-enabled product, meaning much like your car today, which is really more of a computer than it is a, an internal combustion engine. These buildings are built with the smart home technology intertwined with the building itself. They're inextricably linked. We built the smart home from the ground up. It does a number of really important things for the building, for the tenants, for the community, from a sustainability perspective, from a health perspective. So for us, all of the air that our tenants are breathing, they're coming in, it's going through an air monitoring process, it's passing through HEPA filters, it's all purified, clean air so that people are health and, healthy and safe. When they leave during the day, their bathrooms get sterilized using UVC technology, so you always have a safe and sterile bathroom. The lighting in the units is all LED, you can choose from a million different colors. My son, for instance, has red LED lights in his room. I can't explain why, but he seems to like it. You have in-home speakers, you can stream your music into, you can get hearing and visual prompts for anybody who's hearing and visually impaired. There's a whole host of other things that it does. One of the major things that it does is actually feedback to the tenant on how they can use their building, how, how they can use their individual unit in a more thoughtful way from a sustainability, energy efficiency and cost perspective. So it gives feedback not based on what other people are doing, but you. So if one of you were living in a unit, then, and you liked your unit at 70 degrees, on a 70-degree day, the system's gonna check the air quality outside and then it's gonna say to you, hey, notice you like your unit at 70 degrees. If you opened your windows today and you shut off your HVAC, here's how much money you'll save by doing that. Our goal is, is that over time, a month for instance, if you saved for, for something like $3 a day even, at the end of a month, you're talking about money that could be used towards coffee, you could go out to dinner with friends, you could do something that's better for not only you as a person, but also for the local economy, keep that money running through the local economy instead of being used in something that doesn't benefit your quality of life. We do the same thing with water consumption, you know, all of these things in order to be a more sustainable, energy efficient and, and cost-effective approach. All of the units in these buildings are built to, you know, what is called ANSI standards, the, the, without giving you the code number for it, we all commonly refer to it as ADA. So all of our units are accessible. Everything's built to universal design standards. If, for anybody who doesn't know about universal design, it's the idea that your unit can be adapted to whoever you are and whatever your specific needs are. So what does that mean? Well, I'm six foot two, my wife is five foot two. Everybody has this counter height. What's counter height? It's different for a five foot two person than it is for a six foot two person. So what we have is what we call the yoga kitchen, for anybody who takes yoga. Yoga block looks a lot like your iPhone, you can do it super flat, you can do it on its side, you can do it higher. And that way we can adjust the kitchen to the needs of the specific tenant. We can even do that with different modules in the kitchen. So for instance, you live in a unit, you have a bad back, but you're of average height, so you don't want to bend down to load your dishwasher, we can load, we can raise the module for the dishwasher so that it's, you know, effective for you. Everything in the building is, you know, controlled, it's all electric, we have solar on the roof, so, you know, we're expected to be, you know, as close to net zero as possible. We pass all of those savings on to tenants in the form of reduction in their electric bills, meaning we don't take it and then sell it back to the grid and just keep the money for ourselves, we do it to make the unit more affordable for our tenant base. The, all of the systems that we use are low-flow fixtures, high-efficiency heating and cooling, everything you'd sort of expect from a super energy-efficient product and, and otherwise. So all of this is with the goal of trying to produce something that can have all of the trappings of a luxury building, right? High ceilings, big windows, stainless steel appliances, washer-dryers, dishwashers, everything you'd want in it, but can be delivered to a segment of the community that's been left out of the housing paradigm that exists today. What is the housing paradigm that exists today? Well, in order to get a high, the average price of a, what would be considered a high-quality unit in Simsbury is about $2,100 a month. You know, if you wanted to find a Class C property, they actually don't exist in Simsbury right now, you'd have to go over to a neighboring town, but even those for anything that's livable are $1,500 a month for something that's functionally obsolete and really, I, I shudder to say, quite depressing. And so what we want to give people is the opportunity, you know, to live with dignity, to have something that, you know, meets their modern-day standards, you know, that's a 21st century housing product and that focuses on the qualities of sustainability, healthy housing, energy efficiency and green technology, conservation, accessibility so that everybody can enjoy their unit no matter what their varying needs are, and obviously the idea of attainability, so that, you know, we're priced at a level that regular working people can afford. So that's Vessel in a nutshell. I can, you know, talk more about sort of the design aspects and specifics of it, but, you know, without, you know, wanting to go too deep into it and bore everybody, I'll, I'll let you ask any questions and go from there.
Other elevators?
Yes, I'm sorry, I should have asked, I should have said that from the beginning. There are elevators standard in every building. And, you know, the elevators are sized as is code to fit stretchers and things like that, so that, you know, there's never a problem getting anybody out if there's a safety issue.
So do you have one of these buildings to show us, you know, that's up and running and operational?
I do, we have, we have an operational building in, in New Jersey that's, that's up and running. We have another building right now that's being built in New London. And then, you know, hopefully very soon, another one, starting in, starting in Rocky Hill. But, but yeah, I mean, we have them up and running and.
So you have one up and running, it's in New Jersey.
In New Jersey, yeah.
Other than cost, I see that there are no decks or balconies on this building at all. I was wondering, other than cost, is there any other reason?
Yeah, so there's.
Because I would think that's something most people want nowadays.
So cost is, is obviously one aspect of it, that's, that's true. The other aspect is from, you know, a, a long-term maintenance issue. So if you ever go by, you know, an older building that has balconies on it, usually there's problems associated with them. Most importantly, from our perspective, you know, after managing 20,000 units of housing, balconies tend to be storage spaces. So they're not really big enough for people to enjoy like the patio on your backyard is. And what ends up happening is people store stuff on them and they don't actually use them as much as one might expect. And so what we've endeavored to do is to give people everything that they actually really use, things that are gonna really benefit their quality of life, but things that, you know, have been just put into buildings over time that add an enormous amount of cost, both from a construction and maintenance perspective. But what we've seen just historically, there is no use and actually in many cases, a negative use, is to eliminate things like that.
Well, yeah, I think a lot of people are gonna look at something like this. Because of all the efficiencies that you mentioned, it does give the, I'm gonna call it a stoic design for the building. It's actually verily similarly designed to military barracks, which, which are designed to be efficient, which are designed to like be, ensure health and safety of the people in them, but are, you know, stoic. So I, the, the color white, is there a reason it's, it's just marble white?
So, so the color white, you know, why white? We, we use white in all of our renderings for, you know, a couple of reasons. One is, you know, tends to be actually the most popular color that people ultimately use, right? The White House, I mean, it's the most famous place in the state, not to compare those two levels of architecture. But it tends to be a color that's used, you know, universally for housing. That said, the building comes in, you know, pretty much any color you can imagine. And so we're happy to, you know, we, we've seen it look, you know, the best in, you know, white or off-white or gray, you know, tend to be sort of the, the most pleasing palette in, in our, you know, opinion. But, but we're happy to have input on colorization and, you know, there's pretty much anything you can imagine that exists under the sun.
I, I know we're not the design review board, but I, I'll tell you that coming into the meeting, I was, you've done a great job, by the way, so you guys put together a good presentation, but I was very prepared to be pretty harsh on it, and mostly because just the overall look, it's, it's very striking, this, this, this building, stoic.
Stoic.
And it's, it, it looks very different than anything else in the world, you know, to put it mildly. So that's one of the things that I was just, that would be something that would definitely help me out a lot is if it could, if I could see maybe some different, at least some different color, something that isn't quite so focused on right angles. I see a lot of 90 degrees here.
Yeah, so we can certainly show it to you in different colors, absolutely happy to do that. I think the Architectural Design Review Committee wanted to see it in some different colors as well. You know, one of the things that, you know, to, to note is, the, this area here sort of provides a, a big contrast to this and is, is a focal point. So this is what we call our entry court. So you'll see, you know, the, the entry court both gets, you know, sort of lit up for the building as well as, as well as provides, you know, an architectural staircase in and other things like that in order to provide a differential between it. So it breaks up the, it becomes the focal point of the building in that way, in order to, you know, address some of that, you know, you know, concern sort of about the modernist approach to it. But one of the reasons we used sort of modernity, as, you know, one might say in terms of our design, is, you know, the simplicity of a modernist design allows it to blend into the backdrop a little bit, and lets it blend into community. So if you look at, you know, mo, you know, modern housing, even in historic districts, there's tons of examples of modern buildings next to historic buildings that tend to almost either recede in or complement the, the buildings around it, whereas new buildings that try to look like old buildings often sort of miss the boat in terms of, in terms of what that looks like. But, but as you said, a, a big part of, you know, sort of the design elements are also trying to achieve other standards of, you know, we have a flat roof in order to accommodate the solar and in order to accommodate other aspects of the building. You know, we use a rain screen on the exterior in order to prevent rain intrusion and have, you know, greater longevity. to prevent rain intrusion and have greater longevity for the facade of the building, and make sure that you don't have rain penetration into the building that happens in brick buildings. So if you ever see a brick building in a rainstorm, you'll see rain driving at the building, the reason for that is because the pressure behind the wall and in front of the wall is actually different, encouraging water to go in, whereas, a rain screen actually provides a channel in between the facade and the building, so that the pressurization is always exactly the same, so water will bounce off the screen for the most part, and if it ever got behind it, it just drops into a channel, so you never have water intrusion into the building, which is a major problem for both the maintenance and other issues that are in the building.
So, Josh, I'm glad you pointed out the stairway. The stairway's going to be lit twenty-four-seven, right?
Well, it is lit from the internal, so it'll provide like a glow internally, but not lit where there's spillage on other areas of the...
Because that does front directly toward the other neighborhood, correct?
So this is, if we go back to the site plan, I could probably show you better, but...
Is that north-facing?
Here's the entry court, as we call it, right here.
Yeah, there's a buffer.
So you can see between here and here, there's an enormous buffer that exists, plus the existing canal and all of the treeing, so there won't be spillage past our sightline from this, but there also is no way for anybody to see it otherwise. And then, this behind it is not the entry court, so this is opaque, and so there's no spillage to the back onto the trail either.
So you think that that light won't be viewed in the other development to the north?
Won't be able to see it, not possible, not with both the change in topography, the distance between us and the development, and the trees that are there, as well as just the landscaping that's onsite as well.
From public safety, we only need one set of stairs?
Two sets of stairs, so there's a set of stairs here, at the end of the building, right there, a set of stairs here, and then the elevator.
Do we have that in any of the...
Yeah, it's in the architectural plans, you can see the dual staircase, but if you stop here, right here, you can see where the secondary staircase is.
Interior?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any outside patio, any area for the residents?
So we don't have, if we go back to the site plan, and sorry, George. So if we go back here, these are the two areas we sort of have reserved as what I would call green space. What we imagine in those areas is landscaping, obviously, in order to allow people to enjoy themselves outside. We've looked into the idea in some cases of putting benches on them, or a picnic table or something like that. We try to sort of customize it based on what we see with the tenant base, and who's using it and what they want. But yeah, normally, we would look at something like that, in terms of having either some benches or a picnic table type thing, maybe not an actual picnic table, but something like that, in order to give people spaces to just enjoy being outdoors.
I know that you said about patios or decks and things like that, and I'm assuming then the windows are not operational?
Oh, no, the windows are operating.
They are, so people can get fresh air.
Oh, of course, yeah. So actually, the system itself is all fresh air. So interestingly enough, the design standards for purposes of new buildings is to make the facade as airtight as possible, right? You don't want to lose air that you're not supposed to lose. So what ends up happening in terms of the building is, you wrap the building what's called a cellular membrane, in order to have the highest levels of energy efficiency and insulation possible. That then says, unlike our homes that we all live in, which are super leaky, buildings today are designed to be built so that they're not leaky at all. So actually, the HVAC, as you would call it, system, is actually a fresh air transfer system. So in the unit, if you were in a unit, there's what almost accounts for as two honeycombs that exist. One is always pushing air out of the unit, and the other is always pulling air into the unit, so there's no air shafts in the building, it's just every unit is interacting with the outside air itself. And so that honeycomb does two things, one, it's bringing your fresh air in and out at all times, the other thing it's doing is, as your air's leaving, it's trapping all the ambient heat. And so it's like a big ceramic sort of honeycomb that traps the ambient heat, so that when it's done pushing out the air, the other's pulling it in, then when it starts pulling in, that cold air that's coming in gets heated from the ambient heat, so your system doesn't have to work as hard, so that you lower energy costs and become more efficient from that perspective. But there's always fresh air transference going on at all times in the building.
Are there any utility noises from its units or anything like that? Quiet?
So quiet, yeah. The insulation of the building is so much more robust than a typical multifamily building because of the energy efficiencies that we designed to, and then the building itself is also built using all steel construction, and so the noise attenuation in the building and everything like that is to what would be high-rise condo standards, as opposed to like a typical three-story wood-framed building.
Does this only work, and I'm not talking about for this particular project, but theoretically, if you had a larger parcel of property, does your type of construction work with a lower building with a larger footprint?
Yeah, so...
Or do you have to do four?
No, the building itself, the building comes in three, four, and five-story increments, and it can get wider or narrower, so each of these things you see here is called a bay, and you can increase the building or decrease the building in bay increments in order to accommodate different sites. And then, just as a point of reference for purposes of this, just to show you, the two-bedroom units, there's only three of them, you see it's this line right over here, this becomes, once you get past the first floor, it becomes the two-bedroom.
Gotcha, thanks.
Do the units come, they're manufactured off-site, but do they come as a unit, or do they come as...
Yeah, great question. So when people think about modularity, they often think about what's called volumetric modularity, which is big boxes getting delivered that have everything in them. We actually think about it a little bit differently, which is, volumetric modularity has a lot of positive attributes to it, but there's a lot of limitations on it from the perspective of both shipping and installation, and the size of the crane you need, because these things are very, very heavy boxes. So this is actually a panel system, if you think about it, the sides of a box, as well as the floor, I suppose. And so the panels get delivered and stacked up onsite, but the interior of the units gets finished off onsite, as does the skin of the building.
What will you do if, I know you said your studies show that this isn't happening, that you have adequate parking spaces, but what will you do, or what are your plans, if suddenly, all of your tenants in your one-bedroom apartments are couples and they have two cars?
Yeah, it's a great question. So normally, what we do is a couple of things. One is, if need be, as we're leasing, we need to put into our lease that every unit is only allowed one car, we do that in order to address the car demand. Normally, what we see is, is that in most of our buildings, we don't have that as an issue, but if we have to, that's one of the things we will do with leases, in order to limit the amount of cars that we have onsite.
Where's the phase gate go?
The what?
The phase gate.
What's the phase gate?
Well, you're talking about cellular structures that warp and honeycombs, I figured there might be a phase gate.
No, no, we don't have any of that.
Get with the times.
Yeah. What was it?
I think that's enough for tonight. A lot to absorb. For design review, will you bring materials to them?
Yeah, we showed them a few different slides and stuff like that for...
The actual material, I'd like to see what the outside actually looks like.
Yeah, they asked us to bring some samples.
Yeah, we could definitely do that.
Bring that to us as well.
Yeah, we'd like to see that afterwards.
Yeah.
This is new to us.
Absolutely, yeah, and I'm happy to even bring it by in advance, so that if people want to see it.
So we'll be back in March then, and see you again?
The only thing I was going to add, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, there are a lot of questions about the traffic, so we send the application out on referral to the town engineer and to the police department for traffic, so we haven't received those comments back yet. We'll do part of the packet when we head to...
That's helpful.
Well, it was a lot of preliminary, but we appreciate it. Of course, Dave's not here, so you have to repeat it all next month.
That's okay, just wind me up.
You can watch it on TV. Okay, so we will move on here. I don't know that we have any old business, do we, general commission, do we have anything on POCD?
We have about a hundred and two folks who tend to...
To the planning commission next week, and then we'll post those results online. One thing I talked to the chairman about, I do need to talk to you, we'd like to bring the consultant to come to talk to you guys about process, where we are, particularly related to the implementation stuff, I mean, the POC is going to say, we should do this, we should do that.
Folks, we're still meeting, can you be quiet? Hold a conversation outside, please.
So the implementation stuff, we're going to want to have a chat about.
Could Glenn give us, so what I didn't get out of that POCD meeting, is what planning does want to put forward?
Yeah, they haven't gotten there yet. Absolutely not, we're not close to that yet.
Because it was a good discussion, but there weren't specific points.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure, but I think we can have that conversation in terms of the priorities that they are going to be addressing, whether it be affordable housing, whether it be those kinds of things.
Okay, that is my question, are they planning on redoing the Affordable Housing?
They are not.
They're not, they're not actually touching that part of the plan.
Yes, they are. They are going to touch that part of the plan.
Oh, they are?
Yeah, they're going to look at the Affordable Housing Plan and see where it might be able to be upgraded, or strengthened, or clarified, or items for implementation to be added. Yes, so yes. And even maybe some more better direction on kind of where we prefer these kinds of projects and those kinds of things. But we're thrilled by the attendance and the interaction.
It was good attendance. It was a good discussion.
Excellent attendance.
Yeah, it was hard to hear, but...
Yeah.
I wonder if there's any ways, there probably isn't, of getting younger couples, or people with young kids, or recent college graduates who are living in town, to be involved in some of that. It looked like everybody there was, almost everybody there was fifty and over.
It was quite a challenge for us to attract...
But didn't the survey get filled out by that demographic?
That younger.
But they didn't have to go out at night. Okay, okay.
Like sixty-five percent of the folks who responded to the survey were folks without children in the household.
Got it, okay.
And those numbers, I loaded, so if you want to go deep dive on the numbers on that survey, that is loaded on the planning commission website, if you can get deep into those numbers. But we'll have another meeting in a couple of months, and maybe we'll consider having one via Zoom. It's just very difficult to get...
Well, if you've got little kids and you're trying to get them to bed, it's hard to get out.
My dog.
It didn't look like a diverse group, let's put it that way. Interested group, but not diverse.
Are you looking for us to adjourn, Mr.?
No, no, no.
Oh, hold on.
I want the record to indicate I'm very disappointed that the Silvermans have again ignored a commitment to us.
I was going to ask...
Our monthly report, they've had more than a month, where is it?
Good point.
And I'll leave it at that. I don't suspect...
Could you ask them?
And you haven't asked them where and when it's coming, I suspect, but I don't really care about that, I only care about, it's not here, it's more than a month, and the record should indicate that. I've never seen an applicant behave like this in dealing with a land use commission in Simsbury. It's unheard of. It's unheard of.
Good point, thank you.
And they just expect that we're okay, we're not okay. And now, that's enough.
There.
It's not okay.
Bruce, nothing else?
So moved.
All in favor?